Ms. Huber?
Here.
And Councilwoman Yasi is excused.
We also have our municipal clerk, Brianna Smith, Borough Administrator Michael Sondemire, and a Borough Attorney Dawn Sullivan. And also we have our Borough Engineer tonight, Tom Barati. This meeting is called to pursue to the provisions of the Open and Public Meetings Law. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on January 12, 2022. Copies Copies provided to the local news media and posted continuously in a municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public and is on file of the Office of our Municipal Clerk. Per state fire code, I am required to acknowledge that there are two emergency exits in this council chambers. The main entrance which you enter through and a secondary exit to the left where I am seated. If there is an emergency, walk out orderly to the exits, exit through the door, down the stairs, and out the building. If there's any questions, please raise your hand. Okay. We're going to do the sidewalks first. Okay. Item five, Hilltop Terrace Sidewalks. This is a second, final reading of the Public Hearing Bond Ordinance Number 21-2022, Special Assessment Hilltop Terrace Sidewalks. Public Notice Statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in municipal buildings, published in the Herald News, and copies were made available to the public so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Can I have a motion to read by title?
So much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
"Bond Ordinance Providing for Sidewalk Improvements Along the Entire Length of Hilltop Terrace In and By the Borough of Bloomingdale County, Passaic State of New Jersey, Appropriating $275,000 Therefore, And Authorizing the Issuance of $261,000 Bonds Or Notes of the Borough To Finance Part of the Cost Thereof And the Special Assessment of the Cost Thereof."
Okay, can I have a motion? Open up public hearing, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this issue, please come up, state your name and address for the record. You're first.
Listen, I don't know anything about this. I'm Kathy Finnamore, 12 Hilltop Terrace.
Okay, just if you're going to ask question, kind of direct everything to me, and our Borough Engineer will answer what needs to be answered.
I'm just looking for a breakdown of that paperwork that was sent was a little I'm not a lawyer, so.
Okay.
What can someone explain to us exactly the breakdown of how that loan works, the mortgage payment, or if it's added to your taxes, rather?
Okay. It's basically a loan by the borough.
Okay.
Okay, I think it's 1% interest.
I was going to say, is it interest-free?
It's 1% over a 10-year period.
Okay.
And it will be attached to your taxes.
Okay.
Okay, and you'll see, I think there's a separate line.
It's a separate bill.
It's a separate bill. When that comes, you can pay it monthly or quarterly as you get your bill.
Okay.
Or you can pay it all at once.
Okay.
That's entirely up to you. But we're going to put the money out, assess you the cost of it.
Okay.
And if you do decide to sell your house.
Right.
That has to be paid before you can
Before we sell.
Before you sell, before you move.
Gotcha. Are there any perks to paying it upfront? Is there interest-free or reduced rate, or if it's all paid upfront?
If you pay it all upfront, whatever price comes down, that's what you pay.
So regardless?
Right.
It's the same price?
Yes.
It's an annual, not a quarterly.
It's an annual?
It's once a year.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Once a year.
Yep, so it's 10 payments.
So again, I'm paying the mortgage, so I would assume that gets worked into my tax bill through my
It'll be a separate bill that comes to your house.
It'll be a separate bill that comes to my house that we pay.
It will not be part of your mortgage.
Okay, so we would have to pay it quarterly, did you say?
Nope.
No, annually.
Annually.
Once a year.
Okay, once a year.
That was my mistake.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
James Ceresano, 18, Hilltop Terrace. I have a question. I had all my sidewalks replaced a few years back. I got the permits. I got everything. Fitzsimmons from Butler did it years, you know, before he passed away. And when I talk my wife called up and talked to, I guess, the engineer or I don't know. It was you that
Yeah, I did speak with your brother.
And we're going to go on a list.
Mary?
Yeah.
They're going to check the sidewalks?
Yes, but
But he said 99% get them done regardless. I mean, I paid a lot of money not too long ago because I didn't want my sidewalks a mess or having anybody get hurt.
I think I know the house. It's up on the back end?
No.
No, down the front?
Right up the three or four up.
Okay. Well, we'll sidebar that with our engineer and us. If your sidewalk that was redone, you spent all the money and you went and got a permit through the town. I'm assuming it was inspected.
It was three times. Every step, he came and inspected.
So we will contact you. We'll do that individually with you.
Okay, as long as I get a fair shake, huh? That's all I'm asking.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Angela Anacino, 31 Hilltop. I guess my question is the concern of the integrity of my driveway. I have paver stones that are on a slant. So will I have opportunity to speak with someone about being able to be there, how that will be upheld and how that will work at the time of it being worked on?
Tom.
How you doing? Tom Barati. I've spoken to a few people already.
31.
What's your address again?
31.
31. And your name?
Angela Anacino.
And okay. And then you have pavers where?
It's on the sloping side towards the house.
Is it on your driveway?
It is the driveway.
Or is it part of the sidewalk or is it part of the apron that we drive over?
It's not. The apron is asphalt.
Okay.
The pavers are the driveway part.
Okay, so we will normally reset the pavers to butt up against the new apron and sidewalk. Might be leftover pavers. There might be something you need to add. But that's usually part of the project is for us to take care of that for you.
Okay.
And we match the pavers the best that we can. Or if you have extra pavers from when we did it, you can give us those and contractor will set them for you to tie it in.
Okay.
So, but everything in the burrows right away, the apron, the sidewalk, and the ramp or portion of the apron will be concrete. So if any part of that is pavers, we're going to replace it with concrete.
Okay.
Or asphalt. Because you have asphalt, so it sounded like what they
Yeah, the apron against the part by the street.
Yeah, that'll be completely gone.
Okay.
That'll be all concrete. The only thing that'll be asphalt will be your driveways or if it's pavers, we'll leave them as pavers.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's just my biggest concern. More dripping.
We'll tie it in. We always have one or two properties that have pavers. Sometimes there's concrete driveways, believe it or not. So we tie it in the best that we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is the schedule going to be made available so I can arrange to be home from work?
Yes.
Okay.
You're going to be sick of us by the time, you know. For three months. You know, because we're doing you know, I don't know if anybody explained the project to you, but we got a grant from Bloomingdale for about $290,000, from DOT.
DOT.
For about $290,000 to repay the road, repair the curbs, improve the storm drainage. We're also going to be doing sewer laterals between the main and the curb box that's behind your curb or behind your sidewalk. So, you know, residents are typically responsible for that sewer lateral. We're going to be replacing those as part of this project. And that's covered by the grant. The only thing that won't be covered by the grant is the sidewalks, and that's why we're here tonight. So the borough was lucky enough to get that grant. A lot of the street improvements are going to be covered. We're here for the sidewalks. But as far as the length of the project, we're going to go out to award this coming month. It has to be awarded by November, and it'll probably start in the spring sometime. So you're looking next year. A long-winded answer to your question now is you will get a schedule. People will be notified. It will be about a three-month project, doing sewer laterals, storm drain improvements, curbing, sidewalks, and then finally paving. We're also going to do some striping and signage. And we're going to improve the crossing. We're going to give people a place to cross from the internal section of Hilltop to the stem. You know, from the circle to the stem. Give somebody a way to get across. Right now, there's no way to get across if you're disabled. So you'll have a way to get a wheelchair or crutches across the street there. Rapkin was already done, as you know, and that'll look at the intersection of the Hilltop Circle and the stem. We'll have crossings. But you'll have plenty of opportunity. My inspector's there every day. The contractors are there every day. You'll have everybody's phone numbers, my phone number. Anything that you guys want in the way of widened aprons. If you want to change your driveway a little bit, we accommodate those changes. And we'll be there every day. So if you didn't think of something tonight, you're going to tell us next year when we're actually there building the project. So, and that was a really long answer to your question.
I appreciate it.
Only to provide people with questions that I think are coming next. So this is a next-year project.
I appreciate the foresight and all the details I did. I guess surveys or site plans that have been made as a result of this project that are part of public record that we might now have access to?
They will be in the coming weeks.
Okay.
They're at about an 80% level. I have to get them approved by the state because they're giving us the grant money. And then once they approve me, we go out to bid, and then we award the project. This is scheduled to be awarded by October. So all this is happening right now. Once those plans are done, you'll be able to inspect the plans and specs at the clerk's office. There'll be one copy here.
Could we be, could we purchase a copy? For ourselves?
PDF.
Yeah, so it might be nice to have something then.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do about. You know what I'll do is maybe I'll post the link. You know, plan sheets are at least $5 a sheet. It gets really expensive. And I don't want to pass down that expense to you guys. So you can come to my office and look at them. I can post them online. And you can zoom in and zoom out on PDF and have any questions that way. And that's free, so.
That would be fantastic.
Yeah, so what I'll do is I don't know the best way to disseminate to 39 homeowners, you know, the fact that they're going to be posted online. So. Have everybody's yeah. Yeah, you can write it down. That way you don't have to say it aloud.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you all.
And put your email.
Just for the most part of this project, what you see up here today, other than the drops for the ADA and look the same as it, well, a lot better, I'll say that. But it'll be designed pretty much the same as where you live today is where and then once we do dig the curbs and they we restore your property back to the way it was. That's grass, topsoil, all that stuff. You can go ahead.
Just as well remind you, we have underground watering system. Will that also
Sprinklers, sprinklers. That's all taken care of. If the contractor breaks them, he fixes them. There's no cost to you.
If there's an issue with that or, I don't know, a year goes by and one of the sidewalks now cracking, you come to you and say, hey?
For two years, they're guaranteed by contractor.
By the contractor.
Yeah. So if something is structurally wrong or they got a bad mix, it'll show up within two years. And then you can make them come back.
After that, it's all up to them.
Yeah.
All thing we do ask is when winter comes, do not salt the sidewalks. It'll eat right through them.
For at least the first two years.
First two years.
Yeah, and even after that. I mean, old concrete, new concrete, there is no good salt. Some people will tell you magnesium or calcium chloride. It's better, but there is no good salt. All salt does, no matter what kind of salt it is, is melt the ice, it turns to water. Concrete is permeable, believe it or not. It absorbs water. And when it freezes again, because we all know when you lay down salt, it melts, then it freezes again, that freeze thaw will eventually impact the surface of the concrete. It's the cream on the top. You don't see how they aggregate. It looks really nice. This is broom finish.
Right.
The salt will eat right through that eventually, over time. So I tell people never salt unless you really, really, really have to.
Right.
And don't salt and leave it there for three weeks because the snow is coming and make shoveling. Because that's going to also affect it. Salt it, let it melt. And that's a great way to salt formulas that aren't being used if you have to, if you have to at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know it's hard for some older people that lay salt down and leave it there, but it's hard to guarantee a product when you keep salt. Not even concrete. They will break some irrigation heads. I'm not saying that because they want to. It's just sometimes they're using the big machine and it just clips it. We will fix them. We'll cover the cost for that. If they can't fix it, then your irrigation people are going to fix it and give my contractor the bill and they'll pay for it.
Okay.
All right, so just know that we're trying to be careful, but inevitably on every job.
That's understandable. As long as they're going to be held responsible.
Yeah, in heavy construction, it just happens.
Are we going to have access to our driveways during this whole project?
Yes.
Will we be parking on that?
You'll be parking on the street during concrete work for two nights while your apron cures and your curb drop cures. Then you'll be able to use your driveway.
But we won't have to park on Rapkin?
You will on the day of paving.
Oh, I'm thinking
Day of, you know what? It's a day of a pain in the neck, right? But everybody's going to pay on Rapkin. And within a few hours, it cures and then you'll be able to drive back in again.
Gotcha.
So paving's never fun because everybody has to either leave for the day or move their car and walk back. It's just best if you leave for the go to the mall or
Sure.
go do something. But it's a day of mess. There's nothing we can do about it, especially on a dead end that you live on because there's no other outlet to give you.
And the milling, too, is dirty. So
Yeah.
Either stain your driveway because you have to be off the road from milling. So it's really a two or three-day process.
They should be able to mill in one day and pave in one day, so.
I just have one more question about that. 1% interest rate multiplied by all the residents. Where is that interest going to? Is it going back into the pot? Is it going into a fund? Where's that interest that's going to be?
It goes back to utilities.
It's
Or it goes to pay the rest of the loans.
It helps
Yeah, I don't
It doesn't pay the bond off on the money we borrow because that's not really fair to you to pay off everybody else's bill. Doesn't do that. We borrow the money in a bond over X amount of years. So it has nothing to do with that. It's just, I think it's more for handling and it is, right?
It means a big chunk of change if you multiply it over every taxpayer, so.
Yeah, but that's
It's an amount of money. So somewhere.
Okay. So I'm not 100% sure. It's not, it's really to you personally, 1% over a year time. It's individual. I know we say multiply it times 50
Right.
residents. But that's just the way the plan works.
Where'd that money go? Where's that money?
I don't have that answer here. I can find out and I can send you an email. If Tom has your email, you give it to me. I'll find out.
You know, we're getting wopped with this bill that a lot of us, and I'm sure many of the residents aren't prepared for, aren't budgeted for. We're on fixed incomes. Even though 1% sounds like a very minute amount of money, multiply by all the taxpayers.
But if you went out, and Tom usually uses this theory, if you went out and your sidewalks are bad, which I know a lot of them are on Hilltop.
Right.
All right? And you went out to get a contractor to do this work on your own. It would cost you a lot more than what
Understandable.
this is.
Understandable.
But when we do a project, as in Orange Town, when we do sidewalk project, this is the ordinance, the law that we have on the books, not set by us. That was set back and
Right, but you're charging the interest rate. The township is charging the 1% interest rate. Yeah, it might seem minor and small, but I think we have a right to know where that
I'll find out.
Yeah.
Could you give us
Absolutely.
You have, we have your email?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do that, and then we'll get you an answer.
I'd like that, thank you.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
I'm sure everybody would like that answer.
Sure.
I wasn't expecting there to be an interest charge on something that we have no control over.
Understandable, but we'll find out for you.
Thank you.
I know I spoke on the phone with a few residents and I promised to make appointments and I would make those appointments after tonight's meeting. So I know how many people need to be inspected. I know you're one family over here. Is there anybody else that needs me to come and inspect sidewalks that you've replaced within the past five years?
Two.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. If you're going to talk, you got to come up and just state your name and address.
Or if you have any other questions, too.
Yeah, anybody, just please for the record.
You can sign in.
Jennifer Anderson, 66, Hilltop. I actually am here, I just wanted to make mention because my next door neighbor at 64 replaced hers in the last four months. And the reason she's not here is because she recently lost both of her parents. So she's been dealing with a lot of different things.
I spoke with Michelle.
Okay. Because she had her apron done and her entire sidewalk.
I'm aware.
Okay, so just, and I also had two sections of my sidewalk done. So I can give you my contact information. I just wanted to know, like, how that was going to be handled? If it was going to, portions of it had already been replaced. Is it all just going to be ripped up regardless or?
All right, I'll let you work that out with
Okay.
with Tom. Because sometimes when people get things done and we put new concrete, get the checkerboard look. But we usually will work with you.
Okay.
All right.
All right. And then during this process, I know that it was said that we were going to have availability of contacts once the bid was done and we had a contractor and the engineer. During this whole process, should anything go wrong, is there a chain of command as far as escalation if something were to go awry during the setting process? If things, you know, during that span, I'm not talking a year from now or two years. I'm talking like
If the contractor is working on site, Tom has an inspector.
Okay.
If there's something that's serious, the inspector calls Tom and he comes out or a representative from Tom's office will come out and work out whatever details that you're questioning.
Okay.
Or give you an explanation why.
Okay. I just want to make sure I have a chain of command during that process next year should anything come down.
Me, me.
Perfect.
And if he can't get ahold of anybody else, it's Mike or myself.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
If you will. Just please sign in and put your name and email. I'm going to write down your name as well because you have two paths, you said?
Yeah.
What's your address?
66.
66, okay.
Tom, the other question I got from some residents is if they wanted to enlarge their apron. If they're able to do that at this time, they just need to schedule that with you and let you know what they want to go to.
Yeah, you don't even have to let me know until next year. And when we start marking things out, you come out of your house, look at my inspector and say, I'd like my driveway to be over here. That's easy. Your assessment will be slightly adjusted because driveway concrete is thicker and it's reinforced with welded wire fabric. So if you want a wider driveway, your assessment changes a little bit. I don't know what that's going to be because I don't know what their bid price is going to be. I gave you an estimate of what I thought it would be. I hope it's really high and I hope their numbers are less. So wider apron's not a problem. The only caveat is it has to be within your extended prop new frontage. So you have sidelines. As long as that apron stays within your frontage, then I can allow it to be wider. I can't let you make it wider in front of your neighbor's house. If that's not going to make sense, I know, but I just, sometimes that happens. People want a wider apron and they don't realize they're too close to the property line already. But it's not a problem. You're going to tell my inspector. He'll straighten the marks and you'll have a wider apron. It's easy.
There was another question I had, too, where that scenario does happen where somebody has, I guess, a U driveway and they come out in their neighbor's frontage? That'll be taken care of, rectified at that point in time?
Uh, hey, it depends on the situation. Sometimes there's agreements or easements between neighbors because they knew about the encroachment when they bought the property. So I usually just put it back the way it is. If it's something egregious and the neighbors don't agree to it, then I can remove it. Yeah. That's really rare. I hope that's not the case.
The one, I don't know.
The one, you know what?
You got the address?
All right, well, let me know about that.
Yep, I will.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I just want to make sure I heard correctly that it's going to be one annual payment for the whole 12 months now to my house.
Correct. One annual payment per year for 10 years.
Okay. And that has to pay in full, that money?
For whatever that bill is for that year. That's why you have to pay in full for that year.
Or that year.
And then next year?
So it's not going down into 12 months or
No.
It's one month.
Okay.
And it doesn't go with the, if you sell, it doesn't go with, you got to pay off?
Right.
Yeah.
It doesn't transfer to the next owner.
Jean Marie Falco, 50, Hilltop Terrace. Actually, that wasn't my question, but they were just asking about the annual. Somebody earlier said we could pay it if we wanted to in one loan sum.
Yes.
Okay, so we can take it. And I had emailed the engineer. We did ours not that long ago, so I do appreciate it. It could be looked at. If it has to be replaced, it has to be replaced. But I would just appreciate having it looked at. And I was the one that had the issues with the wheelchair. But I just wanted to make sure we could get in and out because we come out that way with our son. And if he can, to lift my driveway now going in, he can get in, but yet if he would go to my neighbors, he couldn't.
Yeah, I have your email. You won't be forgotten. When I'm meeting with you, Michelle, his parents just passed away. Mary and Tom.
Jim.
Jim, sorry, I'm Tom. Mary and Jim, Jean Marie, and, oh, Tom and Beth, Tracy. They're not here.
They're not here.
But they're on my list, too. And 66. You're on my list, too. So all of you, I'll be what I'm trying to do is make a day that I can meet with everybody to save myself multiple trips back and forth. So I'm going to be reaching out to everybody and meeting with you. I won't forget about you and I know you have a disabled person in your family. So you'll be able to get in and out every day without a problem.
All right, that's fine. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And then the only question you mentioned, sewer laterals? I don't know what that is.
That's when you flush your toilet, it goes into the sewer main in the road. There's a lateral pipe that leaves your house foundation and goes into the sewer main. We're going to replace the portion of it between the new sidewalks and the main. Not only is it the homeowner's responsibility, but we don't want to pave and have issues when we vibrate and compact and construct a new pavement. So we've decided to replace the laterals because that neighborhood has a little bit of a history of laterals that aren't so good. I think it's orange per pipe, which probably doesn't mean anything to anybody. But it's old pipe that gets crumbly. So that's going to be covered.
So that was I thought that's what you might have been saying. Because we did the orange, we had problems with the orange per pipe and then they put something inside of it?
They sleeved it, maybe?
Yeah. So we haven't had a problem since then.
Okay. We'll be taking the sewer main and replacing the lateral from the main to the sidewalk. So you'll have a fresh PVC connection that'll last 100 years, in theory. It's PVC, scheduled for a really strong pipe. So I can appreciate that you sleeved it, but we plan on just replacing everybody's.
I was wondering if that's what everybody did.
Yeah, and that's one of the benefits of this project that's being covered by the grant and by the borough's loan to pave the project.
No, I mean, I think it's a good thing, but
Yeah, we don't want to pave over stuff that's not good, so.
And then the last thing, and I guess when you're out there, you can look. I was just afraid that it would change the slope of am I getting more water down my driveway? Because I'm going on a hill. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just
No.
Okay.
No, in fact, we try to make it better. So the apron gets pitched towards the gutter line. So you won't get any more water than what you're getting now. And maybe less, depending on how you guys did what you did.
Yeah, no.
And we leave a lip at the curb. You know how you come into your driveway and you hit a little bump? That little lip is supposed to keep the water in the gutter line as well, so.
Yeah, we have a lip, but my son can get over it and we don't have a problem right now. But there are certain areas where he can't because it's too much of a lip.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, but we try to make it so that it's better than what it is now and that it won't get any more water.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Now, a question. Because you said you priced it a little high, hoping that it might come down. Will we finally get a letter that tells us what our actual cost in the year in one week?
Yes. You'll get two notices. One, you'll know what the bid price is. So you'll have another estimate. And then at the end of the job, we'll take another measurement and give you another estimate, a final assessment. And the reason for that is some people want wider aprons. So then your numbers will change. And then we make actual field measurements and give you a real detailed cost to the cent. You know, to the cent of what it is. So you'll get two more notifications, one of the bid price and then one of the final assessment after we pave and the project's done.
When will you hear, would you see at my side when you look at?
I hope to call you this week.
But I mean, you'll let me know then that it's going to be done regardless, or?
I'll try to. Yeah. It's all about the slopes. You know, maybe we didn't get over this in detail. But the grant money comes with conditions. The DOT wants the project to meet federal and state Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. So there's rules for running slope. That's the slope that you're walking. And I know it's called Hilltop and I know it's steep. And so there's only so much we can do with the running slope. And the law allows us to meet the grade of the road. So we're not creating a bunch of flat areas. So the running slope rules, there's also cross-slope rules. And that cross-slope is the slope between your front lawn and the curb to make sure people aren't walking, you know, like this. So all those rules have to be met when they give us the grant money. So that's what I'll be checking for mostly is cross-slope. Because running slope, you probably won't be used. I also have to look at the slope between the driveway apron and the sidewalk portion. Because there's rules on the transition between the sidewalk and the apron that I can't 45%. the apron that I can't do 95% because you don't want to...
My initial business...
And then if I'm replacing your neighbors on your side, I also have to meet their slope to your slope. And sometimes I can't do that and save what you have on a portion of it. So there's a lot of factors involved. That's why I say a lot of times it gets replaced. But if you did the work within the past few years and you got permits for it, and we can have another...
Very disappointing paying for permits and having it inspected three times and them to say that it wasn't done right.
We're going to try to save them. We're going to try to save them.
Let's see the outcome, let's see the outcome first and then we'll attack it then.
As long as I get a fair shakeout.
You will, if you're...
Eighty years old now and I don't like to put out more money for something that I just didn't...
You're going to deal with me. I'm here, I believe in my Lord. I'm going to come see you and we're going to look at it. If we can save it, if we can save it, we will.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Portales, I'm at Two High Street in Bloomingdale, but I'm here with my sister-in-law. Here's my question, Tom.
Can you, Steve, Steve, come up here and just...
Yeah. So you said it's going to have, have it inspected by the town. Are you going to have someone on site every day overseeing the project?
Yes.
Okay. Because here's my concern. I'm a lawyer. I defend construction companies. A lot of stuff goes wrong. And who's going to bat if something goes wrong for any of these houses? They don't really have, they don't have a contract with this person. They weren't there understanding. You don't want it at their cost, man. Listen, I just know from experience, most projects go right, a lot of them. And you're messing with underground sewer stuff, you're doing curbside stuff, you're doing, you're marking out the streets or you're going down. Things happen, whether it's by fault or not. I don't want to be here two years from now and my sister-in-law is like, well, they damaged this thing and I can't get anyone on the town on the phone. I can't get this done. And now she's in a crappy situation where she's got to incur the costs. And that, that's sort of where I'm at here. I'm just, I'm just here, I'm at her, it's not my house.
So the contractor's insured and bonded. Okay, so if there's a slip and fall, he's insured. That's number one.
Right. It sucks about defending him, but yeah. That would play a central role in the spot.
We, we follow state rules for public contracts and bidding. So all those things are a mandatory part of standard contracts. Number two, he's bonded. If he disappears, I call another company and the bonding company pays them to do it. You're probably familiar with that process as a, as an attorney.
And you guys, I'm sorry, so you have someone on site every day overseeing the project?
Third, third, my guys are there every day.
Town employees?
No, they're my employees.
Okay.
I'm a consulting engineer.
Okay.
Yeah. Town employees are there as needed, especially if there's issues with water or sewer. You know, the town employees come in because it's their utility. But also it's my guys there, all right? They get paid once a month. I don't pay them if something's wrong. It's that simple and they know that. I hold the checkbook and I make a recommendation to the council to either pay these guys or don't. And I've done it before. I've told people, I'm not paying you for that product until it's right. So there's a lot of checks and balances in place. I appreciate you're an attorney, but we have a pretty good track record in this town of contractors finishing the job and doing the right thing. Otherwise, they don't get paid. And we have a great attorney here in Bloomingdale as well. So I know you're an attorney, but we're, we're well protected with the checks and balances of public bidding. We hold the checkbook. I made somebody rip up concrete in Riverdale last month because he tried pouring in a hundred degree day. It didn't ever set right. Made him rip it up and he poured it on a better day. So we're there every day checking these things. Yeah, you have my word. And you're not going to pay your assessment and you're not, they're not going to pay me. You're, you're, and I'm not going to pay a contractor unless it's right. That's, that's...
And who's the point of contact with the town then? Well, let's just say like, Tom seems like a nice guy, but let's just say Tom goes in the wind. What happens in...
It's me.
Okay. And Mike, I know you. I mean, you're, you're, go ahead. Listen, I only see things when they go wrong. And I just want to make sure that, you know, that there's someone at the end of the line that, that, that people can bring stuff to if Tom does go wrong.
You're going to contact me on a day-to-day basis if something is wrong. Let's say I'm ignoring you or my guy's ignoring you, which is not going to happen. Then you're going to call the town and say, hey, your engineers are getting back to me. My guy's going to be there every day. Like I said, you guys, they can come out their front door and talk to my guys every day. They'll be there. And then if there's a problem, feel free to reach out to the clerk or the administrator and they'll call and yell at me and say, Tom, you're not getting back to sixty-six, settle top, you know? So we'll be there every day, guaranteed.
All right.
Just, point of proof is that you have Hamilton, pavement was done, we didn't like it. They had, Tom came back and had them rip the entire thing back out and repave the entire street last year.
Is the same company doing that this one or something?
It all depends on...
It didn't go to bid yet.
It doesn't even go to bid yet.
Didn't go to bid yet.
So the prices are just estimates based on past work done in, in similar areas, not, not putting up the bid yet?
I'm also concerned for what's going on in the world with pricing increases. You know, it's, it's hard to even get concrete today. People are putting in orders and you have to wait two weeks for concrete. So, yeah, there's some, there's some fluff built into the numbers because I'm concerned about what the pricing is going to be. Because pricing keeps going up, availability keeps going up or, or keeps going in other directions, so...
And then how does it work? Does, does Tom collect the bids and then present them to you? Or does the bids go directly to the town and you guys choose?
The clerk and me open up bids here and they're read aloud in public. It's the public bidding laws. We have to do everything in public.
Okay. So the standards aren't those of a private consultant. The standards are those of whatever statutory or based in the town. All right. Thank you guys for answering my questions. Appreciate it. You got it.
Anyone else? Seeing no one?
You guys all saw Rapkin Road, right? Which was done 10 years ago. That's essentially how this project is going to go. And I think Rapkin came out beautiful compared to what it used to be. So that's what we're trying to do here.
I noticed a lot of curbing on Rapkin though. The snow plows rub right against the curves and there's a lot of chunks out of spots of these curves.
I can pass along the message to DBW. They usually are pretty big though.
They go up the, up the street, up the, up the curve.
They're usually pretty good. Sometimes...
I'm not saying that they do a hell of a job. I'm not saying...
Sometimes at four o'clock in the morning when they're trying to plow it, it's a little tough to see. But I'll, I'll pass along the message. They're told every year to be careful, especially on the new streets, you know? Yeah, but they, they're, you know, like I said, at four o'clock in the morning, they've been plowing all night. Sometimes it's tough and they get a little nick. What I can tell you is if it happens, you can call DBW and sometimes they have a repair patch that they can put on there. Because stuff happens sometimes when you're plowing. But we, we can repair it. So if there's ever an issue, just call us. Call us and we'll try to fix it. All right?
All right.
We've done that before. Actually, they ripped out a section of concrete one time, you know, and they've come and replaced it. So just let us know. We'll take care of it.
All right.
All right?
Okay. Do you have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Catalano?
Yes.
Crasiano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Doolin?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
I just want to briefly make sure I know who I'm meeting with. I'm meeting with Michelle, Shiroko, Mary, and Jim Sarassano, Jean Marie Falco, Tom and Beth Tracy, and also sixty-six, Jennifer Anderson. And, and I think I already spoke with Michael Franchino. He just wants a wider apron, so I don't have to meet with him. But is there anybody else I need to meet with or are you really down on your sidewalks? And if I miss somebody or your neighbors said that they're out of town, just have them call me and I'll meet with them. Okay? Yeah, I know people can't make this meeting and sometimes they're away, especially Labor Day, especially Labor Day. Just have them call my office and I'll come meet with them, all right? Okay. Yeah, I have a card.
Okay. Okay. We're going to go into our regular meeting, so you're welcome to stay and listen, ask more questions. But we do have five non-agenda items tonight. We have ovarian cancer awareness month, so we're doing a proclamation, a resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with the Board of Ed, a resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with the Board of Ed regarding snow plowing, and a resolution authorizing a refund of duplicate tax payment. And then we have our final one, holding a utility bill for two thirty-eight Hamburg turnpike. And I'll explain that a little more later. Do you have a motion to go to early public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak by, for an agenda item, please come forward. Seeing no one, a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Report of committees. Go ahead. You mean?
For the senior center, Tuesday, September twentieth, eleven to two, they're doing a resource group health fair. And it's from Septem, it's on September twenty from eleven to two. Join us outside. Hopefully the weather's nice. Otherwise, there is a rain date, nine twenty-two. And it's raffles, they're going to have pizza, dessert and coffee. And it's all kinds of different resources for them regarding health, nursing aids and senior living and things like that. The, also, I think I said it last time, the senior center is also having a rummage sale October first at the senior center in the parking lot at the municipal. The sale will be held inside the Bloomingdale Senior Center. And then with the library committee, they're doing, they're going to be at the Sloan Park Festival, which is this Friday, five thirty to eight. And they're also going to have their, they have obviously book club meetings every month. But, and also October second, October twenty-first, they're doing their Papa Book Raffle at seven PM. And, and an adult craft, also a library. Every month they do an adult craft. It's, that's at the, with the library. That's nine twenty-eight at seven. So lots of stuff.
Anyone else?
Bloomingdale Town Pride Day, September twenty-fourth. We've got over sixty vendors signed up, so I'm pretty proud about that. We also have the rec commission. They're going to be trying three-legged races, well, sack races this year. So it's going to be an interesting and fun new activity. So look for signup sheets for that, actually, that you'll be able to sign up that day. Obviously Ryze and a DJ. We're also going to have a caricaturist, so somebody making wacky pictures of us, which is completely free. I think he's going to be there for about four hours. And then we have a petting zoo, which will be there for, I think roughly two hours near the small field, if you will. So a couple new changes this year that I think are going to be good and are going to go well. And hopefully we have a good-sized crab and I'm sure I'll see most, if not all, of you there. And again, the time's starting at eleven, wrapping up at four. And then, of course, we got the presentations for the Bob Kaczka 5K that really kick off the event.
Anyone else?
Yes. Well, I'm going to kind of repeat public events. This Friday, we have the Sloan Park Festival. Sunday, September eleventh, the Candlelight Memorial at seven PM.
Starting in Butler.
Starting in Butler. And actually, Bree, this, the public event calendar, it says at Sloan Park, just FYI online. But that does start in Butler and it works its way to Bloomingdale. As John just said, Saturday, September twenty-fourth, Pride Day and Bob Kaczka 5K. And the rain date for Pride Day only is Sunday, September twenty-fifth. We have paper shredding on Saturday, October fifteenth at the senior center at nine AM. Then, health department. I'm going to go through a couple of things that came from our health officer. The new suicide and crisis line number is now nine eight eight. The old number of the eight hundred two seven three eight two five five is going to continue to be available. COVID activity, we are still dealing with COVID. And again, you can get testing. It's free testing for Passaic County residents. Passaic County is offering at-home and mobile testing. And booster shots are still available. I think the only thing that he discussed as far as monkeypox is that they are asking that anyone does come in contact with it is to contact their local health department. On the non-agenda items, the ovarian cancer awareness month, a dear friend of mine is a councilman in Rockaway and his sister has ovarian cancer. So I was contacted by her asking if we would do a proclamation for Bloomingdale to raise awareness for ovarian cancer. So that is why that's on the non-agenda list tonight. I think the only other thing, John, which I think maybe you can give a little bit more detail on, not detail, but I think, you know, we really should say something about the past fire that we had.
Yeah, it's one of the non-agenda stuff I would get into there.
Yeah. I, I just, our fire department and our auxiliary and the surrounding departments really did a wonderful job. And, and I'm sorry that the outcome unfortunate, was unfortunate, but they, you know, I give them a lot of credit for putting themselves at risk for people's life and property.
Yeah, I'll, I'll touch on it now because I eventually was able to get up there and see what was going on. The way that fire came in and then speaking to a couple of the police officers that arrived first on the scene, because they always do. And they tried, from what I understand, they tried to get into the building. And they, it was just too intense to, to get into the building where these, where these people were. Their response from, on a hot day, almost, what, ninety degrees that day? The mutual aid of response from the local fire departments, we went as far as Franklin Lake to bring people in, not only to go to the fire and, and help out there, but to backfill our firehouses in case something else happened. And we also covered the towns that were coming here from West Milford to Butler to Kennel Lawn, Pomp and Lakes, Riverdale. You've probably all seen it on the post. I said, thank you. But I can't say enough in how proud I am of our first responders in this town. Tri-Borough, our police department, our fire department, and I'm a little biased there, but for what they did and what they saw was very difficult to handle. And I can tell you that firsthand because with the experience that I have, it's happened to me. And then the, the crisis center was set up to come the next night here and meet with anybody that just wanted to have a conversation. And there are a group of guys that's not psychologists, not medical people. It's people that experienced what our guys experienced and they were able to talk about it freely, which I thought that was a huge benefit to our first responders to be able to come and, and just express their, their issues.
And all towns were invited to that?
Yeah.
All the responding towns.
But again, for what happened, condolences out to that family. There was reports on Facebook about things, which I'm, I'm glad it came down pretty quick because none of it was true. As far as I know, any of it, and I talked to the chief on a regular basis. That day we spoke several times. But that family lost, lost two people. And that's, that's very, very difficult to do. So my condolences go out to the family. And like again, again, thank you to our first responders from the whole area.
Yeah, and I think it's also, only because that's kind of my, my area, is also having the auxiliary there is wonderful.
Yes.
And that's why the auxiliary does fundraisers. So if anybody has an opportunity that when we post that we're having a fundraiser, that everybody understands what that fundraiser is for. And that is that we raise money to support the activities of the fire department. And so, you know, we provide them, you know, with food and water and we're on scene for major incidents like that. And so I think it's wonderful and a good opportunity to tell the residents of Bloomingdale how much their support when we have fundraisers, how much support, you know? It really means a lot to the fire department and the auxiliary.
And really, I thank you to the stumbling up there because they just provide the food, drink and a place to go in and get cooled off. They opened up their building to everybody that want to go in and just chill out a little bit and, you know, cool themselves down. So I thank you to them for opening up their business to everybody there and supplying stuff.
Mayor?
Yep.
On the news, I don't know, the way that the reporter, I don't know if you saw any of the News 12 coverage?
Multiple times.
He was so vague and so horrible the way it was reported because they, like, they spoke to these two neighbors and what they said. And they, they just repeated the vague reporting. Like, it would have been great for someone like you or the chief to have said something. Like, it would've been great for someone like you or the chief to have said something or kept them just with, there's no facts right now, don't listen to any rumors, because this was a tragic, you know, thing that happened. And and then, you know, that that was out there.
Yeah, the, I can tell you, just for me when I was there, the camera people were purposely kept away because of what happened, okay? Speaking to the chief, the prosecutor's office was handling all publications with the news media. That's what we were told by Chief Burrow. So once he gave an order that that was the process we were gonna follow, that's why I did not get involved with that. They were told to deal with the media. And you're right, they ran that over and over and over again with the people that were next door. And I can tell you, from what I understand, as obviously I wasn't there when it first started, is when people see something and that are not experienced in what we do, they tend to say things that are a little bit different than what you see, all right? 'Cause you're not there. Even though they're next door through the woods, you can see stuff. I can tell you from what I was told, the way that house went, and the windows blew out, that's probably what they heard. I heard things that were kind of crazy, and that just wasn't, none of it was true. But when the chief makes a decision to let the state prosecutors handle all the media, that's why we went in that direction, 'cause that was his decision. All right.
Two quick things, maybe lighten the mood.
Go ahead.
All right. So one of our coaches at Triboro Little League approached me about running a fall program for for the kids at Anderson Field. And we're gonna run clinics, we're hopefully gonna start the program this weekend or next weekend. And it's gonna be for about eight weeks of just clinics for the kids, and then a sandlot style game every week, where kids will show up and we'll just make teams, let them let them play. So we're gonna look to extend the program until the weather says we can. And then the second thing, we all know the Blue Field at the high school is done. In fact, a friend of mine was flying home from Nashville, snapped the picture from the plane and said, "I'm close to home," 'cause you can see the field from 15,000 feet up. But BBYC, all of their home games, all their football games are gonna be played there this fall. So that'll alleviate some of the pressure at DeLasure, and the field won't take as much wear and tear. But it's gonna be great for all the kids to play their games over there.
And I believe the grand opening is September 17th at 6:00 PM.
The high school is in two weeks. They're away this week at Hasbro Heights, then back for Week 3, and then BBYC is that week, is it right?
I believe so. But I know they're having it, 'cause the alumni, they put a thing out about the alumni and all that stuff, so I will definitely be attending that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be a neat thing for the Blue Field.
Yeah.
You come down Morris Avenue, Myrtle Avenue in the back, it just sits right through the woods, you can, it's there. You know it's there.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Tom McGee, anything?
No, no appeals from the plan.
Just another water break. Last week, we're on a corner of Union and Main. They fixed that and relocated a fire hydrant there. The Andrew Place is on schedule, as per the schedule we posted about a week ago. They did open up the intersection for the first day of school, so that was a plus. And they're still scheduled to October, be done with all the drain work and start paving that first week of entire project, finish paving that first week of October.
I think the the water main breaks never seen in the past couple of weeks. We have, have to, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to exercise every valve in town yearly, right? We bought a valve machine.
Yep, we bought a, that's a new state mandate.
Yeah, so that's why we're having issues. The valves that are old, however old, when they can't open them, you start exercising it back and forth, and fortunately, two have let loose, and they're repairing them. The benefit to that is if we have an issue, we have to shut water down, we have new valves, it's not a problem. We're gonna have a little bit of pain in the beginning, but it should pay for itself down the road. Anybody else, Mike?
And I know that, and I'm not sure if you or Councilman Graziano wanna talk about the committee for the.
Yeah, Linda, yeah.
Yeah. Just thank that committee.
Go ahead.
Linda and the four or five core members of that, they have, they've grown that tremendously over the last two years. They have 45 vendors this Friday, seven food vendors, so which is double of what it has been in the past. So kudos to to that committee and kudos to a great, a great event that she put together a year and a half ago.
Yeah. You just wanna announce those, the committee, Linda and?
Yeah, I'll just go from her email here. It was Linda Bennett, John Graziano, John Damato, Gail Lavelle, Ralph and Sally Bissell, Angelo from Angelo's Famous Pizza, and Cindy Frank.
Okay. And it should be a fun time, Friday night. I mean, you talk about the things that they have. The Kutz Band, I've heard them, I went to see them a few times, they are very good. So I'm looking forward to that.
And weather's supposed to be good.
The weather's supposed to be nice.
Yes.
Okay. Bree?
I don't think you report. No report this evening, Mayor.
Okay. I pretty much said what I had to say. That's good. All right. All right. Item number nine, resolution number 2022, 9 dot 1 consent agenda. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Just had two questions. The water main break, in the version that we had on our OneDrive, it didn't have a dollar amount in it. I'm just curious what that was, do you know?
Yeah, we gotta just.
Just got it today, I do have it. It's just under $5,000, but I have it.
Okay, that's good, I mean, I got the the general.
Just got $5,000.
$4,575.
Okay.
It was just under. Any other questions? No?
Well, just one, sorry. The core sampling, that's part of the consent agenda, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so that's, is that required by NJDOT? Is that the reason for that?
Yep.
That's what I thought, just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, just to follow up on that one, I was asking the mayor, 'cause I didn't understand that this was standard practice. This is done after a job, they come back and do a core sample. Why wouldn't we just roll this into the original project? And again, nitpicking here, it's not a big, big item, but just automatically roll it into a proposal moving forward. It's just part of the job.
Can you answer it?
Yeah. How you doing?
I'm good, I asked the question, yeah.
The DOT, as part of the GRAMP, requires the asphalt to be core tested. What they're testing for is the level of impact. So all the quarries or plants have a lab certification. They don't test for composition anymore, they used to test for composition too. Core testing is a specialty. It's a lab, it's a professional service, I don't know where it, the contractor can't do it because it's a conflict, so it's just a.
That answers my question right there, then.
Yeah, it's a separate proposal, and we do it at the end, because the rules are always changing. And sometimes it's $1,500, sometimes it's $1,800, and depending on the area.
Right.
And the volume, sometimes we need four samples or five samples or six samples. So I wish I could get it ahead of time, but I can't get approved ahead of time until the asphalt's on the ground.
But the fact that I understand the conflict of interest, that makes all the sense in the world, so that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's fully reimbursable by the DOT, which is good.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
They pay you back for that.
Yeah, it's good to know, too. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Okay. Pending items, second final arena public hearing ordinance number 20 dash 2022 authorizing and confirming the special assessment on Hamilton Street sidewalks. Public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, copies remain available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Kevin, motion to read by title.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale County, Passaic State of New Jersey, authorizing and confirming the special assessments calculated playing to statute and set forth in the report of Darmovski Engineering Associates in connection with the Hamilton Street sidewalk improvements to be paid in installments over the course of tenure.
Okay, Kevin, motion about public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak about this topic, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one, a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Okay. Item B, second final reading of public hearing ordinance number 22 dash 2022, amended chapter 2, class 3 officer, public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, copies remain available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Kevin, motion to read by title.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale County, Passaic State of New Jersey, amending chapter 2, administration, article 5, departments established to add section 2 dash 43, special law enforcement officer class 3 to the code of the Borough of Bloomingdale.
Okay. Kevin, motion about public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, I mean, all in favor, yeah?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Catalano?
Resounding the yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, second final reading of public hearing ordinance number 23 dash 2022, amended salary ordinance for a class 3 officer, public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, copies remain available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Kevin, motion to read by title.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale County, Passaic State of New Jersey, amending ordinance 1 dash 2022, an ordinance establishing a minimum and maximum range of salary and compensation for categories and titles of officers, non-contractual employees and contractual employees of the Borough of Bloomingdale, to include the SLEO class 3 position.
Okay, Kevin, motion to open up public here.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Schubert?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Okay. Item D, we talked about at our last meeting, to establish a building design review board for the BCD district in town. So we just figured we had some time to think about it, so what is your thoughts? I'll start with John, 'cause he's on the economic development, the layers on to the ordinance review, so give us your your take, and then we'll get everybody else's input.
Sure, so my take is that it is a good idea. I think that we should provide a little bit of direction as it's getting thought out, meaning if we have any opinions as to who should be on it, how it should be set, meaning is it an appointment by the mayor, so forth. But I think that it's a good step. It's something the EDC had actually proposed back in 2016, 2017, I wanna say, after we had done a survey of the entire town. One of the things that came from it is they said, "We wanna have a theme for downtown." And that's usually a general response that you hear from anybody. It's been a response to surveys that have been done since then, that we wanna have a theme. And in general, that theme is usually, "What is small-town America?", just exactly what we have as our slogan. It's hard to define, but if you ask anybody, they will tell you Bob's Barbershop. It's almost everyone to a T will say that. So there is an idea out there, I think many folks in the borough understand what that is. And this different commission or committee, it's not a, it's not a rule-making body, right? They can only provide guidance. They're gonna have an objective that's gonna help get out in front of any new development, to say, "This is what we wanna see as a town. Go down this route, and it's gonna make everybody happy. Everyone's gonna like the way it looks." It's really gonna be focused on the facade, the look, right, the feel of it. It's not gonna be so much the nuts and bolts, right, how it gets built. So I think that's a good step to do. They do have to be smart when it gets designed to not make it slow down the process, and we wanna make sure that that goes quickly. But then it should also help out from the planning board review, because as the person, the developer comes over, they've already met with this board perhaps, and they say, "All right, this is the plan, this is what we're gonna put together, this is, we went through your 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 design board, and then they they agreed with this," or "We took their suggestions into account." Rather than waiting until they get to the planning board, somebody saying, "No, we don't like that, it's not within the design," right, whatever could happen. So that's my thoughts. I think that this could be a good thing for the town. I think it's a continuing step in the right direction, from what we've been making since day one, when it comes to first creating the Business Center District, and now taking it through, right, and saying, "Let's have a body that can really help us to make sure that we do get that that theme as new development ever happens on Main Street."
Okay, anybody else?
I would agree with that. I really don't have much more to add on to what John just said, but.
Okay, so you're.
Absolutely, I've always had strong opinions on how I feel our downtown should look, and I, every, pretty much, I would agree with everything John said. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Okay. So as someone who was on the fence, and having this presented to me two other times in discussion since our last meeting, I think that when I initially heard, I was, had my, had a little trepidation regarding it, because I thought it might be an overextension of continuing to try and enforce more rules. And when presented as it is now, as an advisory committee for how things move forward, as opposed to necessarily another methodology to try and enforce our existing rules, it made more sense. So I think that with the right people seated, like John said, to help steer people in the right direction before they get to the planning board, I think that's the the best use of it. So you've you've got me on board now.
Yeah, I've always been on board. I think having a a Main Street downtown is an asset, not every town has one, just based on a town's layout, like Kenelon, for example. There's no downtown to Kenelon, but we have, it's here. So why wouldn't we take advantage of it and put our best foot forward? So yeah, absolutely, I'm working.
Um, I like everything that you said, and I think it'd be nice to have, to have a little input from everyone, 'cause, you know, Bob's Americana is beautiful, and it's, you know, it's very down-home and all that, but yet, you know, you know, as, as this, our town is changing, and a lot of people are very transient, and, you know, they want, they like the food trucks, the downtown, the food, the the atmosphere, the, they love our bar, our bars, you know, our, you know, in town, and having the food. So like, it'd be nice to have a colorful, you know, mixture of, you know, who are the input that you're looking for, is what I'm saying, that it should be a dichotomy of, like, different types of interests, and, you know, young and old, a nice mixture of everyone.
I do agree with that.
Yeah, I think the people on it's a very important factor, one of the people that are committed, that are gonna show up, that can keep that in mind with a general climate and the right variety. agreement, to provide variety.
Okay, I'll give you my two cents, and at first I was kind of like Dominic, another committee puts somebody through to go to, to get to the end, which would delay the process, but speaking to some people from the planning board, Mike, John, and just thoughts for myself, I think it's a good thing to do this, but it can't be a long process, and whoever is on that committee needs to be up to date with all our ordinances on what is allowed and not allowed, so the wrong information isn't given out to somebody who wants to make it an investment in our town. I do agree with EB regarding, I like the Bob's Barbershop, that was 20 years ago, that's when that would discuss everyone, the bar, Bob's Barbershop looked for all of Main Street, and we kind of have that with the River of Beer, the frontage, and it's really nice behind her, too. But the people that have talked to us, the people that want to invest their town, developers, have a little bit of a different idea of what they want to do.
I was going to mention that.
Okay.
I didn't know if you, like, you know, like the drawings, that depiction, and I had said, "Okay, well, that's very city."
That's not the business.
Well, I'm talking just to the BDC, our Main Street, okay, because I know we've had a conversation with somebody that already has a business in town on Main Street, who wants to make an investment on his building, expand it, put more retail on the bottom, and be honest, which eventually probably apartments on top, but we can, he'll work with us, I believe he will, to make it the frontage look kind of what we want.
Yeah.
We don't want to discourage somebody to come in with a set of plans and just say, "No, it can't look like that," but I think that's what this committee will help with. So according to statute, we can, if anybody has anybody you think is interested with the experience in architect or something like that, that wants to be on this committee, please submit the names to Mike, and then I'll look at it, because it is a mayoral appointment to do this, but I think between John and a couple other people, we can sit and talk and say, "Yeah, your name, why we're doing this," and then I can make the appointment to get this committee off the ground.
What you're discussing is you're going to send this to the ordinance review now, and have them start putting together the criteria for this committee, and then they'll kick it back to you, and then the council and the mayor can discuss, we agree with that, or we don't agree with that, we got to make changes to this, whatever the case may be, but let it, let them take it, let them run with it for a month or two, and see what they come back with.
Okay. Does that sound like a plan?
This is just, I mean, probably a viewpoint, it sounds like it'd be a mayoral appointed volunteer committee, but would there be an expectation for a budget for this board, if there are other ones?
Let's get to the first steps first.
Okay.
It's an advisory committee.
What do you order?
It's an advisory committee.
Yeah, so there isn't really a budget.
Okay.
Okay, it's no different than the committee we had for cannabis, that we put some people in and they put their input, but at the end of the day, it's our decision.
Okay.
Okay, with that stuff, and then if it gets to the planning board, it's really the planning board's decision to say, or give their recommendation back to us on how things should go, that won't change, but this is to get, I believe, to draw people in, they have an idea of what we want, then they go back to their planning, their drawing board, and come back and say, "Okay, you said we can do this, here's what it's going to look like."
Okay.
And it might make things actually simpler in the long run. Okay, so Mike will speak to the ordinance review, and John...
Yeah, I will.
And then we'll get that, and then eventually we'll get it to us and read it, read it into detail, and then if we have to make changes, we'll make changes, if we accept it, we'll accept it, and then we'll go from there. All right? Good. Okay, we do have five non-agenda items. First one is, Apoclermation for Ovarian Cancer Awareness, months of September 2022. Need a motion for this, right? Just an awareness?
Is it different? Okay, so obviously breast cancer is breast cancer in October, is there, like, a different color, like, American?
Yes, it's teal. Teal.
Can we put, this might be a question for you, can we put something together on our website to make, so people know what it is?
I can absolutely do that.
I think that would be good. Okay? Okay. We do have a Resolution 2022-9 dot 8, authorizing a shared service agreement with the Board of Education for the Class Three Officer. Have a motion, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Item number three, Resolution 2022-9 dot 9, authorizing a shared service agreement with the Board of Education regarding snow plowing. Just a little background on this, having conversations with the superintendent, that we will be now, we salt their, we salt their parking lots now, we take care of that just for salt, so while we're salted, if it's got to be plowed, we're driving through today, we're going to take over the plowing, that will offset the cost for the Class Three Officer, so they will pay us to snow plow, can I come up with a dollar, Mike?
$15,000.
$15,000, and that'll be our share, and then we'll pay them $15,000 for the officer, you can't, they have to pay something out of their budget line, just like we do, and then they have to receive back in out of our budget line to take care of this, okay? So you understand that? It's kind of a wash, but we're achieving a goal where we get the officer, and it doesn't affect anybody's budget, okay? Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes, and I applaud the process you guys took here, this was positive the whole way around.
Okay, thanks. Item number four, Resolution 2022-9 dot 10, authorizing a refund of duplicate tax payment on Josephs Number Seventeen Hilltop. Have a motion, please.
So moved. Second. You decide, Brian.
You got it?
Yep. Hudson, Graziano.
Okay, any questions on this? This has pretty, explained itself.
Yeah, I've actually done this myself, so I get it.
Yeah, can I, have a motion, please? We did, we did that already, can I have a roll call? I didn't know who did it.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-9 dot 11, hold utility bills for Number 238 Hamburg Turnpike, just for reference, anytime somebody goes through some type of disaster with their home and they're not living in it, we kind of put their bills on hold, this is where, this is the address of where the fire was in Hamburg Turnpike, so this is, we're doing a good thing here. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we're to late public comment. Have a motion, open up the floor to late public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, a motion to close.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we do not have anything for executive session tonight. All right, our next, well, event is the Sloan Park Festival, as we talked earlier, our next regular meet is September 20th, a workshop October 4th. Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.